Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah.
Our board is fully assembled. I have Commissioner Chair Chello, Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
And myself as acting chair. We'll move right into the consent agenda with minutes to.
Sure, I move to approve the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four public meeting minutes.
Any discussion on those minutes?
Good.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Chello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Agency staff report. This is informational to the commissioners. Anybody have any comments that they would like to add to that report?
I mean, I think it's great that we're looking at it. I think that generally speaking, the effort is driven on trying to increase our own staffing, and that's going well. So last week's report with respect to our new onboarding is great. I appreciate the work, how you're doing with in conjunction with HR in terms of coming up with different solutions for both recruiting and more importantly, the element of retaining, because I think that's there's a turnover issue and trying to be driven in understanding why we're having some turnovers. And that sort of, I think, dovetails with the effort. We have a line of transfer coming up. And that I think is directly related to, it's a little premature here, but directly related to retaining people and training. So I like the holistic approach.
They're doing a good job.
I know.
Recruiting. Commissioner Churchill, anything on that? All right. Okay, so food services, RFP. There's a long RFP that we were given on all the details of food services.
It's specifically, if you don't mind, with respect to the jail and all of the requirements to be statutorily and constitutionally requirement requirements with respect to special meals. So I know, Jason, I think everybody spent a ton of time really making this a tight RFP. So I'm just like, let's ship it out. I don't know.
No, I looked at it. It looked like it was assembled appropriately. Lots of details are included of what we're looking for. This needs to go out to bid. And we want, we're going to be in better shape if we get it out early, because everybody will have a better chance to review it. And then we'll have more time to review it and propose questions back to the people who are
Yeah.
gonna apply and make a good decision for the county on the food service.
So I say ship it.
It all looks good to me. I didn't see anything that needed to change, but I know everybody else has worked hard on it and I think it's in good shape. All right, next will be our payroll approval.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and ten cents for the period ending November second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion on payroll? Seems to be right in line.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, commissioner's report. Anybody have anything to report that they'd like to share?
First, congratulations to you, Commissioner Badu, as well as Commissioner-elect Tom Morello. I was expecting to see you, former Commissioner, Commissioner-elect. I was expecting to see you in the present today, but congratulations. And I guess, and then the other thing is shout out to Chantel, who was like through her, looking at some billing, Heritage Health, we're getting back ninety-two thousand dollars. So that is a wonderful thing. Otherwise, we're on sort of, we have, everybody's heading to the conference or many people are heading across the county or heading to the New Hampshire Association of Counties. I know Superintendent Henry, you've been a big part of the planning and preparation as well as some other others, and that's always a great conference, because you get a lot of the, everybody from different counties together. It's nice to collaborate. The trainings are great, and so that should be, you know, a nice opportunity.
Looking forward to that, to get to meet everybody and spend some extra time talking with people from the county that I don't get to see quite as often, and certainly other counties. It's always interesting. I'm sure we'll come back with some helpful information. Commissioner Churchill, do you have anything to report? Okay, I have one other item I'd like to just share. It would, I got an email from Jim Hacker, who indicated that he thinks that we're on track to have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar subsidy for the cafe with all the changes that have been made. He has his first four-month report that he's analyzed.
Fantastic.
And it required about fifty thousand dollars of funds to subsidize it, which is in line with what our expectations were. So he's been a good partner, I think, and he's keeping track. He knows it's something that's important to us, and I was pleased that he sent that along to share.
Is he currently at one fifty-five or he projects out?
No, he projects out for the year to be one fifty-five.
Fifty thousand.
That's good. Right, fifty thousand, right, exactly, for four months.
But I mean, it is sort of in line, to your point, you know, what we talked about, and we, hopefully, people listen to the podcast if they have additional questions. But previously, we were subsidizing about half a million dollars. And so this is, we're still subsidizing, the takeaways are still subsidizing, just reducing some of that subsidy given sort of to be more in line with, you know, increased costs.
I think that we're in good shape, so it was nice to get that. And I don't have anything else to report.
Thanks for that. That was good information.
Uh, next is a discussion on Seabrook burial lot that we've come to light that we own. We've received some little research on real estate procedures in the county. Do you have any suggestions on how we handle this, what we should do to move forward?
I do. One, I mean.
I didn't read it, but go ahead.
Sure. So one, thank you, Leila, for bringing some of the statutory permissions to our attention. And Chuck, thank you. So I will tell you that my statutory, my interpretation, my reading of the statute is that for purposes of buying or selling, if the value exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars, we need delegation approval. And this comes from, and just from a historic approach, and maybe former Commissioner, Commissioner-elect Tom Morello probably has some recollection of this, which is the county has previously purchased real estate. At that point, the statutory value was like five thousand, and there was some adjacent properties that were purchased for forty-five, forty-nine hundred to be underneath the statutory threshold. In two thousand and twenty-three, there was some, if you can actually note it there, there was some statutory changes to make that increase the value for to twenty-five thousand dollars. More interestingly, so I think we don't necessarily need delegation approval for a, because the value is so low. More interestingly is the need to have put it out to competitive bid. All that said, if we want to take the most conservative approach, which is what I would suggest, because we're not in any time crunch, there isn't some urgency to deal with it that we because I think there is another interpretation that you need, no matter what, like that we would need delegation approval, that we should just put it on for the next delegation meeting, that we intend, put them on notice that we intend to sell this property, the lot. And then, and then I do believe we'd have to go out to competitive bid on this, even though the competitive bid will be probably just Seabrook.
I think we'd be a little overly cautious.
That's right.
You know, my personal opinion is that this lot is valued at approximately six hundred dollars.
Maybe less.
And maybe less. I was told by the person who's interested in purchasing it, that the town of Seabrook was going to charge them six hundred dollars if they had ownership, and they don't have ownership. I don't think this is something that needs to go to the delegation. I mean, I appreciate, you know, the diligence, but
Yeah.
it's under twenty-five thousand dollars. We, there's no, we can't bid. We're not gonna, we're giving it away.
Yeah, we're not trying to sell it.
But since we're not trying to sell it, I would be poised to just transfer it to the town of Seabrook or to the appropriate authority at Seabrook, which I think we need to contact them and find out exactly how that you would suggest with a quick claim, Steve, would be the cleanest and quickest way to do that. We would just need to know who and how they want it transferred to, so that they can sell it to the interested party. It's in an old section of a cemetery that almost nobody else is interested in, happens to be next to some relatives. And that's why this person had interest in this particular spot. So to me, I would just move forward with the deed.
And maybe we should just put a, to your point, I believe, and maybe we just put it out there to, we do a little outreach just to be, hey, this is our intent to move forward. In terms of, we could reach out to Cheryl Harley and out of deference, just so they.
I think that is a good idea, to send a notification out to the delegation, to Cheryl, ask her to distribute that and tell her that we've discovered this property, that there's an interest and where our intention is to basically just transfer the deed back to Seabrook. And if they had any questions or concerns about it, to contact us by a certain date, so that we can feel comfortable that they've had an opportunity to take a look at it and interject. If there's some objection, then I would change my position, but I honestly can't imagine there's gonna be much objection.
Feel comfortable with that.
So, Leila, would you send notification out to delegation of what we're up to? Great, thank you. All right, any more on that? I think that pretty much covers it. All right, Department of Homeland Security grant civil rights evaluation tool. Seems rather complicated to me. I'm not sure exactly what this was for. Maybe Chuck can help explain what was going on here.
So for right now, anyways, it's a requirement on homeland security grants. And it's quite, it's not something I recall that we had done before, and as you could see, it's very comprehensive. I did do some research on it, and I did even go to the DHS website, DHS website, and I did pull off whatever templates I could even at least try to start the process as far as, you know, what we should do here at the county. But someone in the end has to be officially designated at the county to be responsible for reviewing any civil rights complaints. And this is not only, this is not just something about equal opportunities as far as employment. This is about that there's no discrimination of any kind in the services we provide, including what would come from a grant.
I mean.
I'll make a motion that we name the assistant, I mean, the acting chair to be the person that does that.
Well, I, I mean, I think.
That's what you're looking for, if anybody else is too busy.
Oh, I'm just saying, this person actually has to, you know, someone has to be like, taken, I've seen other examples of counties where it's times they've had two people in the case of they had like a DEI officer or two.
How much is this grant?
It's not a lot, but I see this, this is a small homeland security one, but this is probably the tip of the iceberg. This is gonna probably become something that's gonna be required probably for most grants in the future, if I had a.
Across all, like.
Yeah, I think the DHS one is just a start.
Okay.
But who knows, things can change too, so.
So at this point, we don't even really know what's involved fully of what we need to do or doing.
Um, yeah, because it's listed as far as the seven items that are required. And items one and two are fairly simple, because it's like, do you have any official complaints or lawsuits? At least we can answer no. You, have you had any sort of compliance review? No, we haven't. So one and two are pretty easy to answer. It's as far as having to have someone delegated in having to have a policy that hits upon certain things. Now, Cheshire County has an example, and Tompkins County, especially out in New Jersey, as I would research to find that they had a more in-depth one than what even Cheshire did. Cheshire labels their county emissaries being the one responsible over there. Tompkins County, like I said, they had the DEI officer, and it sounded like someone else that might be associated with law enforcement that was assigned for that county. But Tompkins County was way more thorough than even Cheshire. And then they even had links as far as what the complaint form was like or whatever. So it's not that we should be expecting complaints, but there's check the box.
So, Mike. Do you want to?
Commissioner Coyle?
Okay, my feeling is, I think we need to step back for a minute, because I think that we are not really in a position to move both. Like, I think we should pull back on this particular grant and but not stop in the terms of, to your point, this is the pipeline, that I don't think that in the timeline, we can effectively create this this infrastructure, really. And I think we should pull back on this grant and then develop the infrastructure moving forward, because I'm a little concerned about putting together everything we need to be compliant and making sure we have the right people in the right positions and develop the templates and the forms and the complaints and everything. It's so.
It's so adept that.
And I don't think we should stop working on that, because I think we need that infrastructure, because it's like, to your point, this is, this is gonna be the future of grants. But I don't think we're, we can effectively and properly be in compliance for purposes of this grant.
Commissioner Churchill?
I'll yield to Sheriff's Department.
Oh.
Catherine.
Catherine, ma'am.
Yeah, Commissioner, so the grant on the table has already been submitted back to the state, so pulling back on that may not necessarily be possible at this moment. The, there is an opportunity that we can request extensions on this through DHS for the compliance tool itself. I don't know how you want to handle that, but that grant has been submitted. You've already signed off on it.
How much is the grant bought?
Hold on for one minute.
It's three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Three thousand.
It's small.
Yeah.
And I.
The other homeland security grant. So this whole time.
And what is the deadline?
Next week. Yeah, so the thirty day is gonna be up on the seventeenth of this month, or we can request an extension.
October seventeenth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chair Chello?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. You know, these homeland security grants typically are for police grants and whatnot. So as I mentioned earlier, I made a motion to have the acting chair be the person that's in charge of it, because as we heard from Chuck Mickerson, our finance director, that most county administrators basically take care of this, and since we don't have a county administrator by choice, you know, the three commissioners are charged with the day-to-day operations. I feel that even if you push it off, you're still gonna be in the same spot. So I, you know, I don't see that changing unless you want to give it to somebody else, but I honestly think that that should fall on at the chair or the acting chair, whether you want to do it now or January.
I appreciate the approach, and I don't think that it's incorrect. It's just that I don't think that we're prepared. I don't, I don't think we fully know what is required, and Chuck, you have something to?
Yes, one other thing. So I try to remember, and Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have thirty days to comply. I think we're probably down to three weeks, though, already off of that thirty days, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Do you have the ability to complete a form that we can just sign?
It would just be probably piggybacking. I'd probably look at that Tompkins County example. They're the most comprehensive one I was able to find.
I mean, if there's something we could do simply, I'd be okay with moving forward with it, but for three thousand dollars, I think that we're rushing the process, and if we're gonna do this, we should be doing it the right way. If it was a big grant, then maybe we would, you know, put a little bit more force power behind it, but I think for the moment.
The exposure is so much higher than the grant amount.
Right, right. So, yeah, to do it wrong, or to make an error. So I would, I would prefer to not comply with the grant and assume it will get denied and move forward with preparation to be prepared to handle the civil rights affidavits properly, and then we'll be ready for other grants. I don't know, the sheriff's department is the ones getting affected by this. How significant is this to you right now?
I think the bigger concern is that failing to comply with a grant that we've already submitted, accepted, and applied for and done all that stuff for affects your eligibility for future grants, not only for the sheriff's office, but the county as an entire entity. If, because the county is the signature authority, you know, part of the signature authority on this. So if we have other grants that fall under this, I believe it is going to potentially negatively impact our ability to be awarded future grants.
Commissioner, would it make more sense to request an extension on the civil rights tool itself in order to have time to compile everything?
But like thirty days isn't going to, you know, small extensions. I'd rather write a letter to say, you know, we can't, we're not in a position at this time to effectively comply with this is ongoing. I significantly doubt it's going to adversely impact us going forward. You know, if we're saying, we're just like, it's a very small grant. We didn't, you know, like, without understanding the extent to which that tool is and, you know, that we need to comply with, and this is like, we're trying to do it the right way, and, you know, be forward, be transparent and thorough and complete. I, it's hard to imagine that would be used against us going forward.
Do you have a, the ability to simplify this down to the basic requirement of fulfilling this grant request? Is it maybe, can we, in the next week or two, could we be given a form to sign? Or, I don't know, maybe, it seems a lot more complicated than that, but if we can dumb it down to fulfill the requirement, I would be okay with that, but.
And it's typically someone, I, it's like, and is there someone in your, in the sheriff's department who could be the one, you know, sort of the administering of the the civil rights complaints and compliance in your department?
No. I don't see, the one thing I, I mean, is the county comfortable with somebody over here being the representative for the diversity, equity, inclusion compliance for the entire county? I mean, because it seems like that's, you're patrolling that. Or, I like the correct word, but, you know, pushing that down to us. I mean, as far as handling the, the, be the individual that could receive any complaints, I don't, I, you know, I, you could even designate that to me, and I wouldn't have any issues with that.
Could we, is there a? Can we extend, can we extend that out?
Well, we have to pull forth the request to DHS in order to extend it, which is possible. The form itself is a two-page form, but it's attaching a series of documents, you know, policies and such, showing that you're in compliance is what's needed.
Now, this does seem like an HR issue, DEI compliance or something like that. And Allison, would you like to chime in on what's going on that you're aware of?
Well, I know each of the HR affiliate groups we've been meeting, and we have had, some of them have already launched DEI programs with their HR. So there is a lot to it, because there is the hiring part of that, too. You know, I would just say it's gonna take a little time to go through that and kind of understand what those provisions are without having the documents to kind of read what they're requesting. I don't know, Chuck would have that, so.
All right, let's, I think we should continue this discussion. There's no action that we're being asked to take right at the moment. Except that we understand that there's an issue and that we might not be able to fully comply with the grant request. But maybe we can wait till next week or the week after to see if anything has, and lights been shined upon us, what we can, what we need to know.
Again, I just, I'm of the mind that the infrastructure for this is extensive.
Extensive.
And the DEI, you know, we can talk about it, maybe we need to do something, put in much more significant infrastructure with HR, with the DEI board, or, you know, we need to, it's not, if it was as simple as completing a form template, but there's like significant administration from both a and from a hiring standpoint. And I think, and I just feel very uncomfortable.
Doing anything until we're prepared to do it right.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that.
And I don't, I mean, I think we need to, like, to the extent that it not having this infrastructure could adversely impact us going for grant applications going forward, then I feel like we should, you know, hit the ground running on this, but from a perspective of a three thousand dollar grant, I don't think we're prepared to, and I, you know, I, I'm comfortable, even if the commissioner's write a letter saying, you know, we're not in a position to accept this, this money, we have to withdraw our acceptance, because because we don't have the infrastructure in place, and we want to make sure we are thoroughly complete in our approach.
Okay. I'd like to continue this discussion to another meeting, and it's just for information. I don't, when did this? When, when did this requirement begin? Is this something that is brand new, or is it something that's been in place that we just haven't complied with over the years?
No, so this started in two thousand and eighteen, but this is our first grant that we've actually seen this as part of their requirements. This is our homeland security grant we've gotten in a while. And these do come around usually annually. I don't know what the source of funding is every single time on these, but we do get this grant every year for our wet team, and we do, you know, get other homeland security grants. A lot of times in the past, those have been related to like the radio system and some of our larger projects. So we may still see this down the road, but at the moment, this is the only one on the table.
Commissioner Churchill?
I was gonna say, why don't we task Chuck to check with Cheshire County how they're doing it, because I know he said he did it, but maybe you can get into a little bit more specifics. The other counties, you know, as you all know, other counties across the country are much larger, have a lot more resources than we do. But if Cheshire County's got that, you know, maybe we ought to recreate the wheel. I'm just concerned that, you know, Major Bashaw said if we skip this, you know, does that look, you know, for future down the road, are they gonna, are they gonna, you know, not continue to give us grants? And as we all know, we're always looking for revenue, so I would recommend, because you guys are all gonna meet next week, talk to Cheshire County, see if it's something that's very simple, and then get right on it.
Yeah, great conference opportunity.
Yeah, it's a good conference opportunity to learn what Cheshire is doing and if they've complied properly.
In the meantime, if I can mention, buddy can have is Molly, our grant writer, reach out to the grants manager over at Cheshire County.
Yeah.
I'm sure that person is probably the one really instrumental in establishing, because again, this is, we really have to worry about discrimination hiring. This is more of the outward facing, as far as grant programs, buying services out to others. That's what this twist is. That, you know, it's only about employment, we could say where we need it, but this is more about services, programs being offered to the public or as part of the grant, so.
So maybe what we do is pull back, but we'll reassess in two weeks, because we're still, and that will give us an opportunity to cap, gather some data, come back to the table with the viability. The viability of moving forward. Does that make sense?
I I agree, I would agree with that.
If it's all right, if if you wouldn't mind, if I could just, if we could send this to Allison, if she hasn't seen some of the requirements in here as well. Because I I think it could be some of these requirements, I think they may not be labeled as such for certain policies, but I think. Some of the intents and some of the requirements may be fulfilled by current county policies that exist. Obviously, there's still the hurdle of the assignment of an individual, which takes a little more complicated, but I think it'd be great if. Uh, because I think HR may be able to say, oh yeah, actually, this, this and this are covered by these policies, so it may be a good opportunity to look at.
Right, share the data, then we'll come back to the table.
Yeah.
Because I mean, if they, you know, and it could be dispositive, yes, they do, no, they don't, right? And that should surprise.
Yeah.
Plus, if you work with the grant, the grant writers too, you know, they have the experience at that, uh, hopefully try to get us through this.
Right, and if it's, if it's not this, it's like, I I mean, in some respects, the worst case scenario is. This is like a relatively small grant, but it it, you know, puts us in a position where we can grow from this. No matter what, and so that we don't forego other opportunities going forward. That's the worst.
It it's a good learning tool anyways, because if these grants are coming down the road, and we can figure out how to do them with our grant writer, you can gesture up. That's it's perfect.
We'll have the infrastructure in place.
All right, so we'll discuss this in a couple of weeks and uh decide if there's anything that we can move forward on or what we need to do. For future grants. All right, move on to facilities operation. We have a discussion on WB Mason Furniture. Furnishings and equipment for the new building. Um, we're just at discussion. I wonder if Jude, you want, could you explain what's happening with this?
This, um, the commissioner has voted to award this contract in July to WB Mason. They've just sent us their AIA contract and um, it's between the time that the agenda was published and now. It went to Primex and Primex has had some comments, so we forwarded their comments to WB Mason and with any luck. Um, we'll come to a resolution, so it will be ready for signature in a couple of weeks. When the, when the motion went through, it didn't say, and for the chair to sign all documents, so that was why it was coming in front of you again. And I think the Primex comments are the usual um indemnification and et cetera, so I I'm hoping for. Yeah, so hopefully it'll be an easy resolution and I'll have it in front of you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on that contract? Looked pretty typical to me, Jim. All right, finance office, New Hampshire State Library Moose Plate Grant Agreement, ten thousand dollars.
Uh, I moved to approve the New Hampshire State Library Moose Plate Grant Agreement for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for preservation of six historical documents. And authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Any discussion on this?
Right, this is like the third or fourth year we've gotten this grant. They're not that easy to get, so it's exciting that we're getting this. And uh, obviously, preservation of historical documents is an awesome thing. It's nice that we can do that.
Okay, well, and any other discussion? Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Harvey Construction AP warrant approval.
I move to approve the November seventh, twenty twenty four accounts payable warrant payable to Harvey Construction Corporation in the amount of five million seven hundred thirty six thousand four hundred forty dollars. And eight cents as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT and senior director of finance.
Uh, discussion on this one. Uh, I am in this, in the same position I've been, but without complete receipt receipts. I'm not in favor of of it, but um, that shouldn't be a surprise to anyone.
Okay, um, what I find interesting is just more in the overall, so we're over halfway expended, right? Um, what is significant is, um, I have one question with respect to the amount of. Of using bond versus ARPA money, are we on track? I have more big picture questions, which is, are we in a good place in terms of we've expended more bonds than ARPA?
Which is good, good news, again, because the GMP already, any part that's ARPA. We already have obligated from the federal sense to meet the ARPA, you know, deadline of twelve thirty one twenty four. Saying our proportional problem bonds, we're, we're, it's good that we're spending more of the bonds, because that's what bond bank needs to see, because we need to. Make sure that's a tax-free borrowing, because if just hang on the money and try to make, you know, a return on it, that doesn't look good. Yeah, and the IRS will declare it now to be a no longer a tax-free borrowing, and that we don't want that. So it's actually good news. I'm sure the bond bank would be happy that they're seeing more funds being spent from from the non-borrowing as well. So it's it's good news that way, and and I believe from, and Jude, you've been at the meeting too, that um Harvey seems very confident on. Me or 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 beating the uh, the projected numbers as far as that, you know, we shouldn't be getting the.
That's, yeah, I mean, it looks, it looks great. I can't believe how mean, well, things are moving along. Thank you to the team. I was so excited when I looked at the warrant and it includes drywall, because you know.
We're at that point.
When I see drywall, I'm like, mechanicals are done. Raw mechanicals, anyway. Touche, my friend, touche. Um, but uh, but anyway, um, I, the other thing that's notable is we haven't touched capital fund or general fund dollars yet. So that's also a good thing. Um, I, it's, I mean, June, Chuck, every, I mean. The heart, everybody's doing just a outstanding job, and I can't believe we already have some brickwork. It's incredible. Um, we're gonna be in a good place. I, it's nice that it's been so warm, the weather condition, so we don't, are not fighting the weather. I know we talked about making predictions for feel like as part of that warrant, some anticipatory diesel costs for winter conditions, but. Uh, every day it stays milder, I guess it's good for building, yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Chercello?
No, I I just want to echo the same facts. I mean, everything was going well according to plan. I mean, I think the. The stars are really aligned all the way around on this project. I'm really happy to see things moving, you know, in the right direction. Um, it's not gonna be that long before everybody starts moving in there, so six months or eight months is right around the corner. Happens quickly, so um, good job, everybody.
And I I'll just share that I'm thrilled with what the team has done. They're doing a great job on the project. Project's coming along. Uh, wonderfully well, and it seems to be uh on or under budget. And uh, there's no complaints. Uh, my only objection is a paperwork procedure. Um, it's got no reflection on any of the work that uh Harvey has done or has uh anyone at the county has done.
I make one more comment?
Joe?
If I can come along. Um, we are, we know the election's over, and the commissioner, I do, you'll be here for another four years, so. I was hoping that you would start to be approving some of these as sort of a a team thing. Um, and I'm appealing to you to uh maybe change your mind. Uh, and if you, if you're not comfortable doing that, that's fine, but it would be nice to be on the record, we're not running for reelection anymore. It'd be nice if you'd be generous, things are going really well, you just admitted that, so. Um, we have finance people that are all set, so I'm appealing to you to change your mind on your vote. If you don't feel comfortable, that's fine.
Well, I appreciate that sentiment, but I want to be clear, uh, my objection had nothing to do with the election. Uh, this was not uh something that I uh thought was necessary to get reelected. It was, it's my opinion on how this is being handled, and I haven't seen anything that's changed my mind and, you know, that's fine. So I I don't have anything else to say on the matter. Um, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote no. All right, moving to human resources, uh, holiday card selection.
Thank you.
Um, there were three. Cards. The first one I saw on the, on the uh, on the form was my preference. I don't know what, what. How do you guys feel? They they were all acceptable. I I liked the extra language on the first card.
I, they're all very nice. I, that's fine with me.
Allison, you have a, an opinion on it? You happy with all three, I suppose?
I I want to give you choices and.
Yeah.
I like, yeah, not to be a contrarian, I like number two, but this is, I'm fine with one. I do like the language just to show that acknowledgement.
Little extra concern and appreciation, right? Okay, so uh, would you make a motion for?
I move to uh. Uh, attachment number one is the twenty twenty four county.
Right, second, okay. Uh, any more discussion on the holiday card? Um, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello, and I vote yes.
I move to approve the purchase of approximately five hundred holiday cards used in uh, human resources budget line one one five dash five three four oh eight. Estimated total cost of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any discussion on? That? No, I don't consider. Uh, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I move to uh, uh authorize the use of the commissioner's electronic signatures on the twenty twenty four holiday card as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
And uh, for discussion on this, I just want to say that this is exactly why we need electronic signatures. Because I don't want to have to sign five hundred times, so I think that we're all in favor of that. Any other, no other comment, okay. Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, uh, bid waiver request.
I move to approve the quest diagnostics pricing terms and bid waiver request of an estimated top cost of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. In the remainder of the fiscal year twenty twenty five is recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Any discussion on? This testing?
The only, I just wanted to thank Allison for doing the diligence on this, um, checking prices in your own, so.
It wasn't a true, uh, I mean, you can, it wasn't a true bid waiver in the sense of you did look at all the compared costs. And also, I mean, I think with respect, Quest does have a pretty extensive uh. Testing, you know, testing locations and so in terms of ease of access for our. Um, for both pre-employment as well as anything that it, it's of value to make it as accessible as possible.
For employees.
And for pickup service.
Right, it's continuous, great.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Chercello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, uh, authorization for account implementation and authorization to sign the quest agreement.
I moved to authorize the senior director of human resources to provide the necessary information to Quest Diagnostics. For the implementation of two accounts for pre-employment testing and further move to authorize the senior director of human resources to sign the agreements with Quest Diagnostics. On behalf of the county pending risk and liability review of the agreement.
Uh, any other discussion on this? It seems that Primex reviewed it and we, I.
They have not, um.
Oh, they have not.
The issue that I'm having is they're a national platform. Everything's done through DocuSign, so I have to go in and accept their proposal. And I've asked for a hard copy, but I haven't been able to retrieve that yet. I'm hoping that will generate the hard copy once I accept. Their proposal for the amounts.
You can't, even when you open it before you start signing on a DocuSign, you can't.
I haven't except, I have to accept the terms of the cost items, their proposal. I haven't been able to do that yet.
Before you can access the code?
Yes.
Before you can access the contract?
Yes.
Oh, so this is to authorize us send the information?
It's to authorize me to uh, accept their proposal of the cost items, and then it will allow me to get in there to get the proposals and stuff. It's been a process trying to get through this part of it.
Well, we understand the cost, so we're, we will look at, we'll let this play out. Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. With the wellness initiative.
I move to approve the utilization of county's wellness funds for the purchase of approximately five hundred blankets of an estimated cost of twenty eight hundred dollars. As recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Any discussion on blankets? Pretty mundane, I saw it, embroidered blankets. Um, okay, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, moving on, um. We're going over to exception request seven eleven department of corrections.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash eleven overtime for the Department of Corrections Investigations and Safety Compliance Coordinator. As recommended by the superintendent and senior director of human resources.
Second.
Any discussion on this exemption? It seems pretty much in line with our regular policies.
Correct, it's also in compliance or it has a, it works with the union. There's enough money in Jason's budget. And also consistent with the uh, the person he, this individual may be partnering with, so in terms of.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, long term care services, healthcare services group agreement.
I move to approve the healthcare services group agreement for housekeeping services and assisted living, human resources, facilities operations, delegation building, the carla building. For a term of five years beginning December first, twenty twenty four, at a monthly amount of twenty one thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars with an annual increase of three percent.
Second.
Any discussion on this housekeeping agreement?
Uh, there were a couple uh, things that I couldn't tell with Primax, if they accepted the Primax changes specifically relative to. Where we landed on indemnification as well as venue, if uh, you, venues for, which is Pennsylvania versus.
Well, we we had, the corrections were put in the contract, I, were they all accepted?
Yeah, my understanding was that they were accepted. I don't believe that they, I know that there were a couple pauses when Chuck looked at it. Um, that, no, they were good, they were good. To opt out of like the grant fund didn't come through and things of that nature. Um, I can verify with Elaine to make sure I'm not misspeaking, but my understanding was they accepted.
Right, sometimes we just can't tell what got accepted. We see the Primax, we see the original, and it's like.
Yep, right.
What is?
We need to make sure that everyone's in line and.
Where we landed.
I'm I'm gonna approve this uh, on my vote, but I'm just, um, and this is really kind of splitting hairs. And maybe in the future, if we're looking at contracts with an es, you know, an escalating per year. Instead of coming with a num, another sort of number, um, I might suggest that we tie it into the Northeast CPI. That currently is two point one right now. It fluctuates, but I'm just curious as to where that number, you know, it, like I said, I'm splitting hairs, to be honest. I know, I know it's not a big huge difference, but if we word it that way, we may save some money overall.
It's, it's fair the one it was. It was, it was as far as three to five, you know, that means five.
Right, that actually, I saw the, oh, Chantel, you were like, can we do a, because they said between.
I I don't take any, it was Elaine who caught that.
Elaine, thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, so she's the one that had caught that when she was going through it and it was brought forward. And then I know that there was um, a kind of an amount in there that if we don't agree on it, it gives us an opt-out that was added at that.
Yeah, I just, like you said, I'm splitting here, I get it. Um, it's just, we you, we could save money and we'll down, down to future.
And Elaine did message me back that she just Primax recommended are all included.
Great.
Good.
So responsible, thank you.
All right, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And we have a line item transfer.
Yes, I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of ten thousand dollars dated November fourth, twenty twenty four. Transferring from service contract to accomplices as recommended by the senior director of healthcare services.
Second.
Um, discussion on this transfer?
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to think all I'm gonna say, so, go ahead, ladies first.
Um, this is, I mean, Chantel, maybe you want to talk, speak to this, but the, the, long and the short of it is, Chantel's worked very. Hard to um, work on having some training in, getting some training to hit a larger array of people. On leadership training. And the, the joys of this, you want to speak to it? I don't want to steal your.
Yeah, sure, so I didn't, I didn't share, but I do have, so one of the things that I've been working with Allison and her team and then meeting with the staff. Um, you know, we have a huge focus of bringing staff in, but we also have to close the back door, right? So if we have um, HR bringing in three people and we're losing two, we're not making any room. So I spend a lot of time trying to talk to different staff, get different feedback, meeting with some of the new staff. Um, anytime someone has left, HR has been wonderful at sending me um, notice that the notice has been given and I have been able to reach out to those people. Um, to get some information. Uh, looking at some of the trends, I think that we have a wonderful leadership team. We have a lot of leaders that are in positions that they're newer to, or they haven't had a lot of that leadership training. And um, in looking at that, I, there's a gentleman who has a health. And um in looking at that, I, there's a gentleman who has a healthcare kind of specialty. He has a seven-part theory that, you know, it's a practical approach, not like a overall of like, how do you start a difficult conversation hiring? How to, you know, the qualities of a boss, those kind of pieces. Um, it's significantly normally more through some creative planning and bartering. Um, it's going to allow once a month for um the course of seven months, a ninety-minute Zoom training hands-on with my team. We will also have access to the recordings. So my off-shift supervisors, um, we can share that if there's something like one of them's on interviewing, et cetera, that, you know, Allison's team was interested in looking at or any of the other departments, we would be able to share that. Um, the other piece that will come with it is it's um a recording that's geared for the frontline staff on customer service approaches, um, kind of from that perspective that we'll have access to. That we will be able to utilize um in our orientation as well to train some of our staff from a customer service piece. Um, and then all of that um at a significantly discounted price.
I wanna first apologize to Chantel and give her credit because she did reach out to me. I'm I'm remembering now. It's my my old age, sometimes it does. Yeah, like, okay, I remember that, but I am happy that, I am happy that you're able to explain that for the fourth time in public. So thank you.
But, I mean, I think that the, why this makes so much sense and is so great is, one, um, the, you know, it's ultimately short money for a great opportunity to hit a lot of people. To hit, you know, to reuse some of these, and it's short money for a very important retention tool.
Agreed. Okay, no further discussion. Uh, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Mitch the Coil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, next to travel and training request approval.
I move to approve a travel and training request for long-term care services employee EW to attend the New Hampshire Association of County's annual conference at the Mount Washington Resort, November eleventh and twelfth at an estimated total cost of one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Any discussion on this? Any discussion?
No.
No.
Uh, Commissioner the Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, department head updates. Allison, you lead us up.
Good morning. It's Allison, Chief of Policy, Senior Director of Human Resources. Um, the Halloween um extravaganza has um been uh closed out, and we're very happy to acknowledge that the county attorney's office has won. Something, so HR is in the jog out. They're licking their wounds. I feel good over it, so congratulations. And I just wanna say how much everybody enjoyed it. There was a lot of activities with the residents, and I know some family members were out there, so they really enjoyed it, and I can't thank you all enough. It seems to ache it on its win. Um, we've just been busy. I've just been really focusing a lot of my time on occupational health, um, getting that up and running. Um, I did let commit the letter letting them know we are ending their contract uh with no uh financial consequences as of December first. Um, so that has been done and accepted on their behalf, and I'm now getting the questing underway. We'll have everything. So there shouldn't be any um uh issues with service levels. Um, also, just so you know, occupational health will now be doing these blood draws on site for the TV testing, so we no longer have to send any money anywhere else, which is a huge, which is one of my things with um MACHA to to do. So that question's been very helpful in doing that and some education around that. So that's, we're also in gear right now, as you can tell, a lot of wellness activities on behalf of the board of commissioners on things beginning in December, so there'll be a lot of different rollouts of that. And we're just um busy and doing a lot of good stuff. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Allison. Uh, Chantel.
Um, good morning. Chantel Chafonan, Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services. Our census out of assisted listening is forty-seven with an anticipated movement this week. Our um at the nursing home are at a hundred and thirty-five. We have no COVID residents on either side. We have one staff member um positive. Just general updates, still working really closely on recruitment and retention as discussed. Um, I'm in the process of working with two of the other county homes for like a little workshop day for myself and some of my team to look at some of the systems they have. On with some of them that have assisted living to kind of build some of those relationships across county, have those support. Uh, so that is in the process. Um, have been working on getting RCM or revenue cycle management system kind of up and running for both sides of the house to have a better idea of collections, accounts, Medicaid, et cetera, in conjunction with that. Our assisted living is currently in the middle of their mock survey as their survey window is opening. And we are, um, if you haven't attended the ADRM, we have already started putting up some of the Christmas lights, which has been great, um, with a plan that we are going to have for our family residents looking to start kind of the tradition. Um, so thank you to Sam. It's kind of been his brainchild um to have a day for families to come in and spend with our residents and kind of encourage that um in like the holiday spirit as well. So that is underway as well.
Great, thank you, Chantel. Uh, Chuck?
Um, let's see, just a quick thing on um delegation. They're gonna have their every other year organizational meeting um by statute, has to be the second Wednesday of December, so twelve eleven. Um, I believe they're gonna do in the Hilton, probably like six thirty. No one really else has to really be there. So I guess I'll check in with Cheryl, make sure she doesn't want me in favor for whatever reason. I have attended some of those in the past. Um, they'll all slowly be doing some like education, have some handouts to members. We're also gonna be voting all the officers and members of the executive committee as well. So Commissioner Churchill is very familiar with.
Oh, yeah.
With that side of of things. Um, I do have an I M D L request to be on next week's agenda. Um. The state was uh composing what they call an intergovernmental transfer agreement. It's an agreement that CMS actually requires uh the state to have with all of its counties. And and this is so that monies in CMS's eyes can be officially paid to the county for quarterly MQ payments and also for annual pro share.
Didn't we have this last year?
Every year, it's a whole thing. This is late.
It's late this year. Okay.
Before is in the vogue, it's early September. I don't know what the exact follow-up was. Um, but of course now the state's like, please sign it soon, but I only got it yesterday.
Right. This is far for the course.
So I did print out some copies. I'll hand off to the board here so that can be reviewed. Um, it's the same, same agreement essentially as all the prior years. Um, the amount that they list in there is basically our net county cap, and I'll even have, as a page I printed, are actually our official allocated cap from DHHS. It puts you the number ties out right to what the fiscal year twenty-five amount is. Uh, also, so also it's required to be in place for us to officially pay the state for our portion of Medicaid liabilities for our elderly and disabled. Um, so CMS has has a requirement, you know, for many, many years in the state. And again, this is places I recall it actually getting out, but that's not on us. So it's just that now the state's like, please, please, please sign now. It's like, well, it's too late now.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, I'm still trying to work with the state to get the numbers for those uh for six months of the uh pandemic from January first of twenty, then.
Yeah.
Six thirty twenty, so I hope I don't have to go in the room to pay um public records for requests, I hope not. So I'm gonna check in with DHHS to see if that can be provided. Um, official draft legislation has been provided representative Stephen Pearson. Um, as far as he's gonna be our our main sponsor of the legislation to try to get a uh up to like twenty-two million dollar credit from the state over one or two fiscal years, that'll be significant. Especially in light of uh we have some information that uh even though current law uh is that county cap should only be going up by a maximum of two percent. Um, the state's really pushing for, I guess, significant increase based on the state county finance committee being that happened recently. So for the National Association of Counties, um, David Ross, he's the long-term care administrator of Phil's Rose, sits as our rep on that committee. So yes, that was unfortunate to hear. So that'll be something that I'm sure myself and others will have to testify and conquer about in the upcoming year, because that's, again, overall. Um, categorical systems, as we call it, make up twenty, twenty-five percent of county budgets. And the only place you can affect that is the state. Um, so we'll see. Also, um, Jude's gonna be able to have more details on this, but she did have great news on a uh rebate or grant program through Eversource, that's an significant amount of monies. So I'll let her talk more about that. So that is a great call. Thank you, Jude. I appreciate it. Yeah, I just hope it's giving you some good news on a certain permit we're hoping for too, but now that continues on, but that was great news, Jude, so thank you. Um, and then just overall, please be patient with us as far as we're in holiday season now. So some deadlines here and there on payroll or AP might get, have to get moved around. Um, and uh we might have to be harder on those um AP deadlines in some cases too. Uh, that only for certain things, like if I have a sports bill, something major, uh, we might let in after AP deadline. So it just had proceeds my own folks too. But uh otherwise, as usual, very busy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Leila?
Just first wanna say congratulations to Tom Tom Morello and to Stan Godu, Commissioner Godu, for their election. Um, and I just wanna remind everyone that next week's uh meeting is Wednesday morning. The Amian is for AP approval only except for emergencies.
Here's still looking at you, Chuck.
Not my fault.
No, it is not.
Do we have a any expected emergency for next week?
Yeah, the. We are. Just trust.
Just trust, yeah.
They do choices.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's.
All right, great. Uh, Jude?
Good morning. I thought Chuck was stealing my thunder for a minute there.
Setting you up, Jude.
Thank you very much. Um, I did receive notice this week. Early on in the, in the municipal building project, we reached out to Eversource regarding um energy efficiency incentives. They always get a pool of money every year, and you kind of have to be on board ahead of it, and we made it. So I received notice this week we'll be getting a energy efficiency incentive of ninety-nine thousand dollars and some change. Just for putting in like LED lighting and efficient mo- like things that are saving us money anyway, and we're also getting an incentive for it. So it it's good news all the way around. We won't see it until the end of the project because they come in after the fact and they do a verification that everything's been installed according to plan, et cetera. But it's looking good, so I was pretty excited when I got that. I might have called Chuck hopping up and down. Um, we, we do have a lot going on. Um, we're busy as usual. Delegation is almost wrapped up. That project has been almost the definition of creep scope. Every time Cheryl pops in, there's another little something that we need to take care of. So we'll be grateful to get, get out of that project. It came out really well. If you have an opportunity to pop in, we dropped a ceiling, we upgraded the lighting, we replaced the flooring in the kitchen, the ramp. It came out really, really well. It, it was much more than just taking down a wall.
How many kept the old refrigerator?
Um, actually, we took out the old refrigerator and put the photocopier in there, so now her kitchen's even more spacious.
I'm just teasing you.
So it would, the duct tape was doing a good job of holding the handle on, but she was, she was done with it. What else? We've been upgrading lighting on Mitchell One to LED fixtures. It's coming out really well. It's one of the um, one of the first projects our new electrician took on, and he's doing a great job down there. We're looking at um on the order of ninety-plus fire sprinklers that need to re- replace down at the jail for one reason or another, um, damage, paint, toothpaste, et cetera. My plumbers are gonna be taking it on one block at a time. So I reviewed the the spec with Brentwood Fire Department. We're in good shape. We're on the right path, and we'll be working on that in-house because it's just a lot less expensive to do it that way, and we do have, have the blessing of two plumbers right now. Um, as far as the the new building goes, it, She-Ruck is going up. It looks really good. There's windows going in. The DOC portion is essentially um undercover now for the winter. They're in great shape, so it's.
You help paint it over?
Yeah, I don't do paint.
All right, continue, Jane.
It's been, um, it's been permitting, permitting, permitting again this week. DOT is looking at um the, the pedestrian improvements that we have to do. DES is looking at the water main. DES is looking at well number four. So there's been uh just a lot of activity back and forth with the state. They're very helpful and very supportive. It's just, you know, it, so much of it is formulaic. It just takes a really long time. I have a couple of phone calls with them today. I wanna make sure everybody's really clear that everything has to be in place because a lot of this stuff is RPA-funded. The wastewater plant is RPA-funded, the water main, um, et cetera. So I'm feeling some anxiety over it, so I'll be making sure that everyone knows.
Just, Jude, just, I mean, you've done such an amazing job keeping the ball moving, rolling in fa- in the face of all these permitting issues. I mean, we all know you can just get totally bogged down and out of standstill trying to get these permits. And uh you have just done a incredible job managing that so the projects uh stays on, on, you know, time schedule and it's just remarkable because the state is so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Jude. Uh, Superintendent Henry?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, currently at one forty in here. Um, lots of training going on with all these hires, so I don't know who half of them are. I'm trying to meet them at this point, so um just very busy with that. Working with Jude's department, you know, putting up our key boxes and those kinds of things, and Robyn's been working uh with me on the Relias um learning uh program. So we have that, uh, hopefully about to run this this year as well as a supplemental training program. So just a lot of good things going on, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Uh, Pat Conway? How are you turning?
Good morning, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Godu and also to Tom Tom Morello for winning their elections. Look forward to continue to working with both of you. Um, we just hired or are about to hire subject to a background check, Jennifer Hunt as a victim advocate here. Jen has over twenty-five years of experience in this field. She worked uh for the AG's office for a long period of time. She also worked for our county attorney's office. She was at the US Attorney's Office um and decided she wanted to move back to uh doing victim advocacy work for our county attorney's office so she could work more directly with victims of crime. So I'm really excited about hiring her. And she's, I just think she's gonna be great and a tremendous office um asset to our office. Um, yeah, we won the scarecrow contest, so I'm really excited about that. I don't, we've never won. I never thought we'd win, but really excited about it. Everybody here was super excited. Everybody here was super excited about it, so we're gonna have to like uh keep it going next year. Now the pressure is on, but excited about it. We're super busy here with trials. Um. I just completed a domestic violence trial with um an assistant county attorney here, and uh we were able to get guilty verdicts despite uh the fact the victim denied that the incident occurred. Um, so it was really a good win, and Lieutenant Norton came and testified for us. Superintendent Henry, he did a great job. We played some jail calls, which uh helped a lot. So that was a good win. Um, the courthouse is having case lines training today for attorneys in this office and also just other attorneys that practice here in Superior Court. As the the court is moving towards um using this platform to, for exhibits during trials. So that um instead of like having a actual physical copy of like a photograph, we're gonna be um displaying it digitally on a screen for witnesses who will be sitting in the witness stand and for the jury as well. So that's exciting. Um, so I'll be going to that training this morning along with some other people. They are pulling in some other judges to sit in this courthouse. We have three judges right now, and we're so busy that um they have Judge Neto sitting here, and I'm sure most of you know Judge Neto. She's retired, but she, she actually sat on the trial we just did. Um, because all the other judges had trials as well. So we're busy, but things are going well, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Pat. Hi, Kathy Stacy.
Good morning. Not too much to report. That eight million dollar transaction did take place uh this week, cash deal for a house. I love it. Um, I mean, I have to say, I'm noticing a lot of um, a lot of sale signs on property, so that's kind of a good sign, I guess. Um, we've been getting a huge influx of phone calls uh from people who are saying they're getting. uh from people who are saying they're getting phone calls from LifeLock telling them that they own property in Rockingham County. And I'm talking about people from all over the country. So um I told my staff, see if we can get copies of whatever they're being sent. And then I'm gonna address it probably up with maybe um the AG's office, figure out what's going on because these people are pretty frustrated and obviously staff, you know, would do the best we can, but, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going on. If it's, if they're, you know, fake phone call, I don't know. I I just don't know. But all I know is it's affecting my office significantly. So um, other than that, um, um, I I want to thank, you know, I actually want to say congrats to Commissioner Godu and Commissioner Tomorello. And uh I'm sure that uh, you know, it's it's bittersweet because I know Commissioner Churchill Cello is leaving us, but uh, you know, it's it's a good thing. So all in all, thank you so much. That's it.
Great. Um, it seems it has a sheriff's office, looks like they've uh signed off. So we'll, we will uh dispense with a an update from that, from the sheriff's office. And we'll move into new business and old business. We have something from the Department of Corrections. Uh, walk-in request to vacate RFP award.
I move to vacate the approved award to Americare for the portion of the inmate personal care items RFP, which was approved on October thirty first, twenty twenty four. An award, the item to Bob Barker Incorporated, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Uh, discussion on this.
Shaving cream. They didn't want the one item.
They only got one thing, so we don't want anything. Probably they priced it in consideration of getting some other products.
Sure.
Didn't work out, but that's, it's all good. Um, Commissioner Churchill. Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, public comment. Commissioner elect Tom Morello.
Good morning, everybody. Thank, thanks, everybody for uh the nice words. I'm more than thrilled to get back. And we worked real, real hard and obviously if you work that hard, I won all fifteen towns in District Three, so we were really happy. And I'm thrilled to get back. And I can't believe that Allison did not cheat with the scarecrow thing. I'm shocked. Pat was like a hundred to one to have a shot to win that. So I don't know how it would happen, but they have cheated. The ten years I was there, they cheated nine. I caught them one year, but they're back on target to be honest. So I had Kathy Stacy probably winning it at one to one. Pat Conway's group was a hundred to one and she pulled it off. So but I'm thrilled. I'll see all of yous up there at the conference and I can't thank enough, you know, we're pretty lucky at the county. And, you know, I talked to a Du- Dupont group and Jordan McGlaras over the weekend and, you know, Rockingham is really special. And I'm thrilled to go back there. You know, you, two years took a long time, but I'm thrilled to go back. And I'm trying to look, I look at Katie Casey's office, Katie in the middle there. That looks like a nice little office there. But we'll be looking around for a new office. So, but I'm thrilled and I can't thank yous all enough. And I am, I haven't stopped smiling since Tuesday night. So I look forward to being with all of yous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Looking forward to working with you. Um, any other public comment?
You know better than to say that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I I and I I failed to call for any other new or old business. We had one item. Was there anything else that somebody needs to bring up? I don't think so. Okay.
I just wanted um to confirm that we received the information from the NCU about uh the removal of the dental insurance for new employees that come in. So we have thirteen probationary ones that are just are in that grouping that will grandfathered in. But what county will need to do is offer our dental insurance to them. Monitor it for that year. Coming up on that year mark, we'll notify them that they have and give them the paperwork for the NCU dental for them to enroll in the NCU dental because they don't stay on our dental. So, but we'll be doing that. Chuck and I talked about that uh yesterday and that's what we'll be doing.
We don't need a ma- a motion on that.
No, they've sent us, the commissioners.
I did see it. Okay. There's nothing further. I would say that it's time for us to move into non-public session.
To enter into non-public.
But did you have? If you have something that you would like to comment, I'd be happy to entertain it. Okay, great.
I move to enter into non-public pursuit to ninety one A call and three, section two personnel. And I think this is, we're inviting Allison. So, yes, you're gonna go probably last. Do you have?
You have one. Chuck and I, Evan and I have one too.
Okay, thank you.
So voting on the floor to go move into non-public. And it's second. Uh, Commissioner Coyle.
Yeah.
Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you, everyone. We're going into our non-public session. We are returned from our non-public session and uh Commissioner Coyle has some motions to make.
Sure, we had uh five non-public sessions. I mean, move to seal sessions two, three, four, and five indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of this board. And they're being sealed indefinitely because we don't have a finite time of the conclusion of any of these issues.
Any discussion on that? Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I have one further motion to make, which is I move to approve a holiday bonus in the amount of a hundred and seventy five dollars payable to all benefits eligible staff to be paid um in the December, on the December sixth, twenty twenty four payroll and authorize the Senior Director of Human Resources to engage in MOUs with respective unions as well as sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I just that we're excited to give holiday bonuses to our staff and we appreciate everyone. And um we look forward to uh to showing our, another level of our appreciation.
Great. Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill. And I vote yes.
I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Do we know why we got these?